Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda before we get to that, Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we wish former Planning Board member and current selectman Paul Simino a speedy recovery.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
It just came to my attention that he was out due to an illness over the past couple of weeks, and wish him the best and hope he gets back to work for himself and the town as soon as possible.
Any other discussion? At the risk of this being beyond our jurisdiction, all in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda, oh, and Planning Board member Kathy Bartolini is under the weather tonight. We wish her to get better as soon as possible, and if she's watching, we'll all say hi to Kathy. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, St. Mark's School Solar Energy Array. I will read the public hearing notice. Per Section 174-10 of the South Pro zoning code, the Planning Board of the Town of South Pro shall hold a public hearing on Monday, February 22, 2016, at the Thomas J. McAuliffe Hearing Room, second-floor townhouse, to consider the application of St. Mark's School of South Pro Incorporated for site plan approval at 7:00 PM. This hearing concerns the installation of a 641.7 kilowatt DC ground-mounted photovoltaic solar energy array located on the west campus of St. Mark's School, occupying less than two acres of land for St. Mark's School's own use on land owned by St. Mark's School located at Sears Road, South Pro, Mass., Sessors Map 74, Lot 6, and Map 53, Lot 9. A copy of the plans and applications may be reviewed at the Office of the Planning Board at the townhouse during normal business hours. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated, signed by the chairman, myself. I see we have neighbors and St. Marks here this evening. Mr. Falk, did you want to get started?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian Falk from Maric O'Connell here on behalf of St. Marks. Given that we're down two members tonight, Mr. Chairman, we would request that the board take no action tonight and instead open the hearing at its March 7 meeting.
While the hearing is open, we would vote to continue it to the March 7 meeting. Is that your request?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
The... The approval period ends on March 19, 2016. Since we're capable of having this hearing tonight in full force, and it's your request to continue with no action, I just want to make sure that in doing so, that there'll be some flexibility with the approval period in the form of an extension if needed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
Actually, let me ask first for attendance for March 7.
So, the three members here are available that day, and we know that Mr. Jenks is expected back in town well before that date, so, and pray that Mrs. Bartolini will be here as well. Mr. Mills, what's, we have a hearing, our agenda for the 7th has one item. It's a hearing for 6 and 8 Turnpike Road, site plan review and special permit for lower impact development. That starts at 7:00, so probably recommend that we go at 7:45. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we extend the public hearing for St. Mark's School Solar Array to March 7, 2016 at 7:40 PM.
Second.
Okay, that's for the public hearing for the site plan review? Yes. And I think you said, did you say continue the hearing? Was your motion to continue?
Continue the hearing.
Okay, and then after the, if, if that motion carries, then we'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the special permit for, oh, there is no special permit. Right, there is no special permit for this, for the St. Marks, right. Yes, no, microphone check. Right here.
John Bartolini for Y.A. Circle, I'm going to butter to this. My question is this to, through the chair, is it doesn't require a special permit, so what, what are we postponing this for?
Just the site plan. I was, I was looking at the, the agenda for our next meeting that has both site plan and, and special permit, but it's for a different project.
Right.
So this is just site plan, that's all it is.
But it's not required to have a supermajority, so you have, I'm just asking the question. If Kathy is watching it, you have four members. Is that, am I wrong?
We don't know if she's watching.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we just, we would prefer to have a full panel present for the, for the hearing.
That's fine. I just, question as to why it had a, because I knew it wasn't a special permit.
No, we try to accommodate the applicant's requests, as you know.
I do very well.
And in this case, our agenda for March 7 can accommodate them, so if that's their request and the board votes to grant it, then that's what we'll do. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on March 7 at 7:40.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't think we can, I don't think we can move it up. Our next agenda item is an 8:00 PM road acceptance meeting. It's not a hearing. And it's 7:12 right now. We're going to discuss other things that we may be able to do in public session before our next agenda item. So while, while we do that, we'll entertain a motion for a recess. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? See you in two minutes.
Planning Board is back in session. We took a little time out there to go over administrative items for the rest of the evening. Our next agenda item is at 8:00 p.m., and it's 20 minutes of eight. So we're going to go over a few things that were in our packets here tonight. Before I do that, I'll ask Terry to do a little screenshot of the room. Our next agenda item, people haven't showed up yet. But we're going to press on with a couple of other administrative items to update the public. First of all is the meeting minutes. Thank you, Destiny, for getting these done. We can't take action on them tonight because of the attendance tonight and those who attended the meetings on January 25th and February 11th. So we'll keep these in our packet and deal with them at our next meeting, which, by the way, is on the 29th. It's a joint meeting with the Selectmen. The next item, which is an agenda item, it's the agenda item discussion residences at Park Central. The environmental notification form, the ENF comments were due last Friday. And working in the planning office with Hillary and seeing that also the Conservation Commission prepared responses, the planning board prepared a response and submitted that on Friday. It was essentially an email to the MIPA office. And attached to that email were three letters that the planning board had sent to the ZBA. And the comments in those letters are still viable. They're still items that we're concerned about and thought that we would share those with MIPA. The email refers to those letters. And that email went out to the MIPA office, but also went out to the copy to the Board of Selectmen, the ZBA, and the planning board members. So if there's... Is there any discussion on those? Mr. Mills?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think that the one point I'd like to discuss is that there was this... Since December 2nd, 2014, when the planning board wrote a letter to the ZBA specifically referencing the 40B where we made a... had a vote requesting to... recommending that it be denied at that time due to safety. The planning board has not taken any votes since then, even though there have been a lot of new information in the past 15 months or so that have come forth about it. We have not made a new vote yet on whether to deny or request denial or approval either way since then. So even in light of new information that's come forth.
Thanks for bringing that up because that email does indicate that the board's position may be to approve with conditions rather than deny. But you're correct. The board has not officially voted since we wrote that letter back in 2014. That's something that's still out there. Thanks for bringing that up. On Friday, after the planning board submitted our comments to MIPA, I was on the phone with MAPC sharing that information that we had... that the planning board had commented and that, to our knowledge, Conservation Commission had commented. The reason I was on the phone with MAPC was I was returning a phone call from the day before. And my discussion... I was told that MAPC intended to submit comments as well. And by later in the day on Friday around 5:00, I was called back by MAPC and they informed me that they did submit a letter to MIPA. And we received... The planning department received a copy of that letter electronically. And we have it here. It's dated February 19th, and it's in our packets. So I wanted to let you and the public know. No, I haven't read it yet. But we do have comments from MAPC relative to the ENF for the Park Central projects. So the only thing I have on the planner's report essentially are these items that we get in the mail, the legal notices. This one's from the City of Marlborough. It has to do with an overlay district, hospitality and recreation mixed-use overlay district. They're going to have a public hearing on a proposed zoning amendment. The public hearing is March 7th. Feel free to look at that. And then this other item, I think we talked about at our last meeting, which is from the town of Westboro. And it has to do with their public hearing that was held back in February... earlier in February, amending some zoning bylaws. I can tell you that I'm in the planner's office almost every day. And I continue to be so grateful to Hillary for keeping up with everything. We were all set up here tonight. Our packets were delivered on time for today's meeting. She's been coordinating with the Selectmen's office on the public hearings for the road She's been on the phone with town council almost every day, including today. And she's really done a great job of keeping up with things. And I want you guys to know and the public to know that in the absence of a town planner, that Hillary is once again, you know, taking care of things. So it's still a little bit before 8:00. We have to wait until our 8:00 agenda item, and then they'll go quickly. Hopefully, we don't have to have a long gap in between there every 10 minutes. So entertain a motion for a two-minute recess. We'll come back for the 8:00 agenda item. Mr. Mills? Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, hearing not all in favor? See you in two minutes. See you in two minutes.
Planning Board's back in session. Eight o'clock. Our eight o'clock agenda item, road acceptance, William Caleri Lane, Reservoir View Estates. The... The Board of Selectmen sent us a copy of a letter. Sorry. Copy of a letter to the Board of Selectmen from Mr. Chuck Black. Dear Board, Kendall Holmes Incorporated would like to request that you consider accepting William Caleri Lane as a public road at your annual town meeting. Thank you for your consideration. Chuck Black, Kendall Holmes, President and Treasurer. And that was dated January 25th, 2000... Says fifteen here.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And then, um... That was January 25th. And then from the Board of Selectmen, uh, Town Administrator to the Town Clerk. Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will hold a road layout hearing on the above street, which is William Caleri Lane. The hearing will be held on Monday, February 29th, 2016, at 6:45 PM in the second-floor hearing room of the Salpro Townhouse, Seventeenth Common Street, Salpro, Mass. Very truly yours, Mark Purple, Town Administrator. And DPW Karen Superintendent was copied on this, along with the Conservation Commission. These are currently... This is currently Article 27th on the, uh, the draft, uh, town meeting, Article Twenty-Seventh. So, moving forward with that, uh, we have received a letter dated February 16th from Mimi Latrell, Commissioner of the Open Space Preservation Commission, uh, to the Planning Board members. And I see that Mrs. Latrell is here tonight. It has to do with William Caleri Lane and Fox Hill Drive, which is a future agenda item tonight. So, Mimi, could you, um, come forward and read, as you feel appropriate, this, this letter so the public and Mr. Black? Did you get a copy of this?
No.
Would you like a copy?
Sure.
You'll have to wait. No, it's right here. Right here. This is several weeks' copy. Do you, do you have one, Jesse?
I have it on my phone.
Let me go make... Well...
Whatever, I can wait.
Oh, wait. No, it's this one here. Why don't we have Mrs. Latrell read it? And then, while, while, if we're discussing it...
You want me to read the whole letter?
Well, only the, uh, only the William Caleri part. Or whatever part you want to read, but...
It's on. Mimi Latrell, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Dear Planning Board Members, the Open Space Preservation Commission, OSPC, met on January 28th, 2016, and discussed the subdivision open space associated with William Caleri Lane and Fox Hill Drive road acceptances on the warrant for annual town meeting. We offer the following comments with regard to the open space. As the road acceptance is the town's final side-off, sign-off, it is imperative the open space has been preserved as is required in the approved subdivision plans, decisions, and other documents filed at the Registry of Deeds relating to the subdivision. Willing in Caleri Lane, the OSPC, in conjunction with the Planning Board, conducted a site walk of the open space in November of 2014. At that time, it was discovered that a portion of the open space had been cleared and turned into lawn during the installation of the septic system. Several meetings took place between the developer members of the Planning Board and the OSPC. Various remedies were proposed by the developer. The developer ultimately decided that his best option was to return the disturbed area, the disturbed open space lawn area, back to the natural, undisturbed open space, as was required in the approved plan and the open space requirements filed with the Registry of Deeds, Book 53179, page 184. A plan was devised and agreed upon to restore the encroached open space to its natural state by planting native species of bushes and mulching, mulching with leaf litter to differentiate this area from the lawn. It was determined that the best time to plant the bushes would be in the fall, and a follow-up inspection was recommended for November of 2015. During the summer of 2015, that portion of the open space continued to be mowed, prompting the town planner to notify the current homeowner not to mow the open space. At a January 2016 Planning Board meeting, the town planner informed the board that she had inspected the property, shared pictures of her findings, and opined that the tiny bushes planted in the lawn satisfied the agreement. The OSPC disagrees. The present state of the open space has not been restored to its natural state as agreed upon. Lawn was not the natural state of the open space. The three tiny bushes do not replicate the condition of the open space prior to its being cleared, and the bushes have not been mulched with leaf litter. The picture taken by the town planner, which was attached to the letter, shows the condition of the open space area in question in the foreground, does not replicate the undisturbed open space in the background of the picture, which is the natural state the developer agreed to replicate. The open space area in question left in its current condition creates an invitation for continual mowing of the lawn and probable disappearance of the tiny shrubs. More concerning... More concerning, um, a dangerous precedent is set when a resolution is agreed upon. The terms of the agreed agreement are not carried out, and the Planning Board appears to accept this deficiency. The OSPC recommends the lawn be removed from the open space area in question, more shrubs planted to replicate the undisturbed condition prior to its being cleared, and the shrubs mulched with leaf litter as agreed upon.
I'm gonna go see if I can get into the copy room to make a copy of that. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't make a copy, it's locked. So, do you want to take a minute to look at it?
No, we've heard what you mean by "wait."
Do you want a copy?
We wouldn't have to do aggressive with the property.
Could you come up to the right one?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Black.
Good evening. Chuck Black, Kendall Holmes, and my wife Jean is with me, and we live at Four William Caleri Lane in Southborough. And we are totally familiar with, um, this small triangular piece of land that was just discussed. And what happened was, I think it was in a fall, we planted the plants that we agreed to plant, and we did put leaf litter in this little tiny triangle. This triangle is about maybe that little area right there, very small.
Could you tell roughly the dimensions? What, the shape and the, and the dimensions?
It's a triangle. If I had to guess, it's maybe fifteen feet in, in a triangular form. And so, you know, it was an honest error that, um, the land was worked when we did a septic system. We all met, we all, we did what was required. Then what happened inadvertently, when Curtis Landscaping did a fall cleanup at the property, they cleaned up the leaf litter. And it's a mistake. So, and then when the homeowner bought the property, Greg Nyberg, I said, "Greg," I said, "You, you can't be going in there." So, the leaf litter got put back. And I do not believe, to the best of my knowledge, that once Greg Nyberg, who's a very nice gentleman, knew about this, he's not mowing this little tiny, tiny triangular piece. So, my wife and I, we believe in open space. We've posted the signs around the perimeter of the open space as, as required. And if, in the spirit of compromise, if, um, this organization would like us to put a couple more shrubs in with Mr. Nyberg's permission when the weather breaks, we'd be more than happy to. Because we don't want to see people encroaching into the open space either, because we live there.
I'll open it up to the Board, Mr. Mills.
So, the, uh, the open space is not on your property specifically, right?
No, at this point, you know, we, we put the road in, we had five building lots, we built the five homes. Again, we live in one of the homes, and we have sold the other four. So, there was a family that moved there, and they've been there...
A year.
A year, Jean? Yeah, one year, so...
Has the leaf mulch, you said it was put back?
Yes.
Is it there now?
I believe, and I think that's what the town planner is implying, and I think that this organization is saying, "Well, it's there, but it's not in the spirit that they'd like."
So, the, the, the road acceptance would be in April...
Correct.
At town meeting. And you're saying you'll, you'll plant shrubs when the weather breaks? And so, my concern is, we, we're meeting with the Board of Selectmen Monday...
Yes.
On this, on our warrant articles.
Mm-hmm.
And I, we really need to come to a resolution with the Open Space Commission before that, in my opinion.
Okay.
So that this can go smoothly. So, I'd like to hear some ideas about how we're gonna move forward with you and the Open Space Commission being on the same page.
Sure, if it pleases the Open Space Commission or the town, and, you know, you want us to put up a cash bond, you know, to guarantee that this will be done, that's okay. Again, we're not he... I, we, my wife and I got notified this afternoon that this meeting was even happening tonight. We never got a copy of this letter, so we're here as town residents, we'd be more than happy, whatever makes logical sense, we're more than pleased to do it.
So... That goes back to the Open Space Commission. In terms of a cash bond, is that an acceptable resolution, so that we can move forward with the road acceptance?
Well, that would be up to this Board, but what the Open Space Preservation Commission would like to see is that area differentiated from the lawn, not look like lawn, look like... More closely replicate what it was prior, so it won't continue to be mowed. And the, the picture the town planner showed had a couple of leaves that had looked like that'd fallen from a tree. It was definitely, you know, not mulched, which is, you know, two to three inches of leaf litter to, for mulch.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, then, would, without putting words in the Open Space Commission's, or speaking for them, saying it that way, is it the preference, then, to see, like, that area completely rototillered up and the, the grass ripped out and natural, some seed get thrown in there? Or if it is just, like, overgrown grass that is going, you know, that's being left untouched with whatever leaves, leaves that are on it now, is that acceptable? Or, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what, so that, you know, Mr. Black can do what he needs to, to say, "Okay, and we are all in agreement." The next time we meet, that, that's good. But, that's all. So, I'm trying to figure out what that, where that point is.
Um, well, if it's, if it's mulched properly, the gla, grass won't grow. So, the mulch, which is two to three inches of leaf litter mulch, so it looks not like a landscaped area, but looks like the natural condition and more bushes. And, you know, would be good if it looks like opens, the open space.
I just get concerned, could leaf litter mulch get blown off with strong winds in March? Is my question. I don't know, I'm not a landscaper, I'm... I know, I'm not trying to be difficult either, I'm just, like...
I, I don't think if there's three inches of it, it will. I don't know, I've never used, I don't use mulch.
Okay. Mr. Black?
You know, if it's, um, if it pleases everybody, I'd be more than happy to contact Curtis Landscaping tomorrow and the homeowner. And there's no snow in the ground right now, I would imagine we could get some leaf litter and go over there and put the leaf litter, you know, extra thick, and let the open space folks come and take a look. Again, I think that Mr. Nyberg, who lives at this property, he was in front of the Conservation Commission, uh, this past year because he wanted to add a fence to his property. So, he's very familiar that that little triangular piece is not supposed to be maintained. And now that I think about it, he doesn't, he does his own landscaping, he does, he cuts his own grass, so he doesn't hire a service. So, he knows full well what this is.
Okay.
And, you know, so again, if it's, if it pleases everybody, I'd be more than happy to follow up on this tomorrow and report back to whoever I'm supposed to report back to and say, "Yeah, we were able to get some leaves out of the forest, and it's been put back." Or put back thicker, or whatever. I, honestly, since I didn't know this was an issue...
I understand.
I haven't gone over to Mr. Nyberg's property for quite some time, so I really don't know. I can't represent what it looks like today.
So, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be that Mr. Black moves forward with that, and that perhaps in the interim between that being executed and Monday night's meeting with the Board of Selectmen, that we conduct a site visit jointly with the Open Space Commission, so that for Monday night, we're all on the same page.
Sounds like a plan. And that work and site visit would have right up until about 6:30 on Monday night, because our agenda item is 6:45 with the Selectmen. So, it'd take a couple of minutes to drive from William Caleri Lane to the town hall and be on time with our Selectmen's meeting. I can tell you that as far as road acceptances over the years, we've, um, had work being completed, uh, within minutes of a vote at town me, at town meeting. So...
Let's not use that as a precedent, Mr. Chairman.
Not at all. But I, I just, you know, if, if Monday, if Mon, if it's still not done on Monday morning, you still have Monday to get the work done and have it verified, so that when we sit with the Selectmen on Monday night, hopefully it'll get done tomorrow or the next day, and we can look at it this week and then walk in to our, uh, agenda with the Selectmen on Monday, knowing that everybody's on the same page and that the work is done.
That's fine with us.
So, what I would suggest, then, is for you to do, as you said, make arrangements with the landscaper, and then call Hillary.
Fine.
And let her know what the plan is and when.
That's fine, and I'll, tomorrow morning, when it gets light out, I'll go inspect the area myself, and then I'll contact Curtis Landscaping to go and put some leaf litter there. Or more leaf litter, depending on what I find.
Did I hear more bushes also?
Well, I, I would guess I cannot buy any shrubs this time of year.
But they could be planted before April 11th?
Certainly.
That's town meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, just so I'm clear, are we talking, so it's a small area? There, I believe there's three blueberry bushes there now? Is there a raspberry bush you want to put in, or does it matter? Doesn't matter?
Just so it doesn't look like lawn.
Just so it doesn't.
Looks like open space, so it's differentiated from the lawn.
I don't want it to look like a shrubber either.
Like what?
That's a, that's a Monty Python reference for you. Um, okay. So, if there was two other berry bushes of some type, natural to the...
Native.
To the area?
Yeah.
Native, she said, and, and that's fine.
Native.
Yep. We'll get two more planted before April 11th, and we'll get leaf litter installed before 6:30 PM on Monday night.
And then can they be, what, two varying sizes, so they don't look like they were as random as possible?
And if I may add, without being argumentative, it would have been wonderful, being a resident of this town, if somebody could have contacted Mr. Black or I before tonight. Because if you drive down our street, we think we've done a wonderful job, and we've been involved in many open space developments, of which we're involved in a large one now, and we care about open space. So, if somebody contacted us, we would have been good neighbors, but nobody did.
Appreciate that.
This is a surprise to us.
Yeah.
I understand.
Well, we, when did, when did we get that letter? I wasn't aware of that until tonight, so... That's why we didn't even have copies made.
Yep. All right. Good night, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next step is to call Hillary.
Yep, we will, tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 8:10 PM, road acceptance, Fox Hill Drive, Parkerville Heights. We've received a letter from the Town Administrator, Office of the Board of Selectmen, dated February 17th, to the Town Clerk. Dear Mr. Hegarty, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will hold a road layout hearing on the above street, Fox Hill Drive. The hearing will be held on Monday, February 29th, 2016, at 6:30 PM in the second-floor hearing room at Salpro Townhouse, Seventeenth Common Street, Salpro, Mass. Very truly yours, Mark Purple, Town Administrator. Uh, Mrs. Latrell, uh, we received that letter. Uh, you, the commission wrote a letter to the Planning Board in regard to Fox Hill Drive. Could you read that for us, please?
Fox Hill Drive, the open space set aside is a little over two acres in easements on lots 12-2 and 11-2. The open space easements are referenced in the deeds. Although the open space areas look to be undisturbed on Google Maps, that should be verified.
Mr. Baralini?
I, I believe we're 100% in compliance with everything that requires to do this road. It's my understanding that the road plans were submitted and that everything was accepted and fine. Other than that, I don't know what else to tell you.
Mr. Mills?
We had no, um, Jenny hadn't gone out and verified this one, correct?
Correct.
No questions?
So...
Mr. Stein?
Uh, am I thinking right that maybe we should follow the same path that we just did with Caleri Lane and do a site visit before Monday night, so that that is not in question at that point?
I think so.
Yep. So, why don't we schedule that with the Open Space Commission for some time between now and 6:45 on Monday?
6:30.
6:30, excuse me.
Um, I think the letter closes by saying that something needs to be verified?
Well, just that... Just that the, um, the open space remains in its undisturbed state as required, that's all.
A site visit would, would serve at that, as that verification, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Has anyone from the commission, the Open Space Commission, gone out there and looked at the site?
Not recently, no.
It's just that, uh, I've said this before, that I feel that it's the, uh, the initial job of the commission to, if you have a, if you have an issue, to bring that to our attention. If you have concerns, then you will have the ability to go out and, you know, check out those concerns, uh, yourself, and then if your concerns are taken care of, then that's it. And if they're not, then you bring the concerns to the Planning Board. So, I, you know, in this case, I don't have a problem, I guess, going out there and, and looking at the open space, but I just don't, I just feel as though if it hasn't been, if the, if there isn't a problem that's been identified by somebody, then, uh, and nobody feels like verifying that it's in compliance, it shouldn't be our, it should not be the Planning Board's, uh, I, I just don't feel it's our responsibility to, to be the initial group to go out there and, and do that. Does, can, can the concert, the Open Space Commission go out there and, and verify that there's no problem?
We can, but it's, we've asked this question before, and it's been our understanding that we do not have the authority to, to conduct site visits on our own. We've done them in conjunction with the, the Planning Board.
Goes back to what Jenny was trying to fix.
Do they have permission to go out on their own, Jack?
Uh, no. There's people living there, so I'm, I'm just gonna be quick about this. This is an old subdivision, as you know, and, um, it's taken a lot longer to complete than before. All these things, all the open space was done on easements. The easements were accepted when the plan was accepted. The road is not really tied to the, to the open space. This is not an open space plan as, in the zoning as of today. So, it, it is a little bit different. Um, the, um, the roadway, you're not accepting any open space at this time, you've already done it.
So, I remember, I was at the Board of Selectmen last year when Mr. Samino specifically asked, when we did our road acceptances, as warrant articles, in front of the Board of Selectmen, "Are there any outstanding open space issues with any of these roads?" And again, back to our earlier, um, motion, I wish Mr. Samino a speedy recovery, because I'm sure he's gonna be sorely missed, uh, and is sorely missed, and we, we wish him well. But that sticks in my mind, that this is one of the key questions that the Board of Selectmen has asked in the past, and therefore I would assume will ask again in the future. So, I really think we should work toward being on the same page with the Open Space Commission, so we're all ready for Monday night and things go smoothly.
Could you read that last recommendation in the letter that you said? Could you read that sentence again, Mimi?
Although the open space appears... Although the open space appears, the open space area looks to be undisturbed on Google Maps, that should be verified.
So how do we verify it, Jack?
I'd have to contact the neighbors, and see if they'll allow you on, and then we have to walk up and look at it.
Can you do that? Can you do that this week?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll try and get it done, yeah.
Were you here for the last William Clary Lane discussion?
I walked in in the middle of it.
Well, the, uh, proponent there left here with homework to do, and said he would get back with Hillary tomorrow. Could you do that?
I will try, yes.
So...
I'm not here to argue or fight, I'm just, you know, I mean, it's...
That's two for two, 'cause the last, the last gentleman that was here said the same thing, so we're, we're doing well so far, I think.
When does this meeting take place that you wrote this letter?
When did our meeting? January twentieth?
January twentieth.
Eight.
Twenty eighth. And nobody knows about it till now.
Then we have to write the letter. We're volunteers.
So, uh, what we'll hope to hear is, uh, you contacting Hillary, saying that the, the homeowners of the, uh, open space have granted permission for a site walk sometime this week?
Yes.
And then Hillary will notify the Planning Board members and the, uh, Open Space Commission members, uh, and will try to coordinate a, a site walk before six thirty on Monday night.
Okay.
Great. Did you want it, uh, you had your hand up, Freddie? No? Very good.
I, I just wanna say, I hope the board doesn't understand, I, I have sold all these off, so it's not like I can just say, oh yeah, I've gotta ask people, so I just want...
Oh yeah, we understand.
All right.
Right, well, that was the same, same story, uh, with the previous, with William Clary Lane, so... We'll just do the best we can, and keep it, try to keep it moving. Speaking of keeping it moving, our next agenda item is, uh, open space acceptance. Kilham Farm Estates, open space parcel. On Kilham Farm? Not, not on the table, no. Let me, let me look in the, uh, over here. Trying to do the best we can without a town planner. This would be Article thirty-four on the town warrant, uh, to see if the town will vote to accept an open space parcel approximately seven point five seven plus or minus acres, as shown on a plan of land entitled definitive flexible subdivision plan of Kilham Farm, of Kilham Farm Plan of Land in South Pro, Mass., and so on and so on. Nineteen ninety-eight, revised nineteen ninety-nine, and so on. There was a meeting on January eighth, two thousand sixteen, with the Town Council, Mrs. Latrell, Mrs. Gillespie, Town Planner. And then the last person was me. I remember at that meeting, and I'm sure, um, we have notes here from that meeting, the way it was concluded that, yes, uh, the, the developer, um, went in there last spring and cleaned out a whole bunch of stuff. Uh, farm debris, tires, uh, different stuff that was in that open space, uh, and thought that they had it all. We agreed, uh, at that time in the spring, when the poison ivy was covering, uh, the site, that we would come back after, uh, after the foliage came down and take, do another inspection, which we did. It was in November, I think, we went out there, and, um, almost all of the stuff that was identified in the spring had been removed, but there was still more stuff, and we took some pictures. There's some piping, uh, metal pipe, uh, some tin cans and glass, um, rusty, rusty, uh, cans that were identified, and also what appeared to be a mound, uh, a material that was, uh, some of it may have been roofing material, and old pipes, uh, that were put there a long time ago as part of a farm dump. So, the Open Space Commission and myself and the Town Planner, along with, uh, the Town Council, and someone else, maybe you guys can remember. Was it Mark? Mark Purple? Uh, met, and if I remember correctly, Town Council stated that, uh, even though this farm debris was there, that it didn't, uh, pose a threat, and that, um, it didn't really warrant any further action, and that the town should accept the open space at the spring town meeting. I think I have that in my memory. I'm looking at these notes, and since you, you two were at that meeting, you can come forward and, um, see if you remember the same thing. I thought there was, at that meeting, there was a disagreement with the Town Council's recommendation to go forward, uh, and accepting it. And the disagreement wasn't, uh, necessarily with me, because I felt that if the council felt comfortable with those materials there and the town accepting the land, then it was okay. But I believe that, uh, Open Space Commission did not agree. Who wants to go first? Mrs. Latrell?
Mimi Latrell, Open Space Preservation Commission. The concern of the, um, commission has been, and was even after, um, the site visit in November, although, as, um, the chairman referenced, most of the, uh, visible debris on the surface had been removed. There's a large mound, if you dig your heel into it, all kinds of stuff is buried there, and it's unclear what's buried there, and if, and there's a stream, which is attributable to the, um, Sudbury River, right at the base of that mound. Our concern was what, um, the liability would be to the town if that eventually leached anything into the, into the stream.
Oh, yes.
Freddie Gillespie, um, I was at the site walk and the meeting, and my recollection of how we left the meeting was very different than what you just, um, well, than your memory. Town Planner was going to, um, on the advice of Mark Purple, that it had no way of passing town meeting, that we shouldn't, um, even attempt because of the concerns over potential liability for the town, um, that we would approach the South Pro Open Land Foundation, the Sudbury Valley Trustees, and the Preservation Trust, to see if a land trust wanted to take ownership. And that the Open Space Commission also asked why not carve that portion of the property out and have the town take the rest of the property without the, what's called a farm dump, but what we had seen there before was not farm material dump, but, um, industrial car parts, fifty gallon drums. So, we had offered that solution, carve that part, portion of the parcel out and have the town take it. Or the other solution was to see if a land trust wanted it, and if so, we would still need a conservation restriction put on it, because it still needed to be permanently protected. And the other option was to, that we were told would not happen, was to have the property owner clean it up. It appears that there's a whole huge side of a hill that is full of just stuff dumped over, covered up over years. And it wasn't, um, it didn't look benign, and we have photos before and even at that recent site visit.
So, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Which, which of these options is gonna be the one that's most likely to be expedited for an April town meeting? And that's sort of an o- open question, I guess.
If I can go, go back, uh, I should have looked at these notes earlier. You're correct, the way the meeting ended, um, there was a discussion about a third party taking the, uh, the open space. And, uh, as it turns out, the Town Planner did contact, um, it looks like, if I remember right, she told me she made one phone call, but I'm, and I thought it was to the Preservation Trust, but I, I could be wrong, but she's got here Sudbury Valley Trustees, SOF Preservation Trust, trustees, which I think is, must be trustees of the reservation, and then there's another acronym here that I don't, that's not familiar. So, if I remember correctly, and I'll check this with her, uh, tomorrow, uh, to verify, that she made one phone call, and, uh, I think it was to the Preservation Trust, and they said, yes, they would take the, uh, the, uh, the land. So, uh, with that, uh, potential, the, um, subdivision approval stated, the Planning Board approved the subdivision with a condition that the open space be, uh, deeded over to the town. So, that requires a warrant article and the vote of the town meeting to accept that, that land. So, I believe it was left, or it was discussed anyways, that there would be a warrant article for, uh, this land on the town warrant for the, to comply with the condition of the, of the, uh, subdivision approval. That, uh, warrant article would then be, uh, brought to the townspeople, they would vote, and then based on, uh, if the town voted to accept it, then it would be accepted. And if the town voted not to accept it, uh, because of the concerns about the materials that are there, then the condition of the approval would have been completed in that we, the, the, uh, the proponent attempted to have the, uh, the land accepted by the town, and the town, uh, declined. And so I think that's why it's, it's a, um, it's on the warrant for this coming town meeting. And of course, if it's not accepted, then the plan B would be to have it turned over to one of these groups that the Town Planner contacted and who indicated that they would take the land. Mr. Mills?
I'm sorry, you lost me. Can you explain that one more time? So, we, we have to put this forward to see if the town will accept it, even though we know that there, there's a possible farm dump there?
Yes, the, I don't wanna, um, I'm just going by my memory of what Town Council stated, and really, essentially, the bottom line was, in my memory, was that Town Council felt that it was, in the absence of any evidence to the, that, that shows that it, there's a big problem there, or any problem, other than a farm dump, which are all over, all over, uh, you know, New England, uh, then it's okay to, for the town to accept the land. He didn't have a problem with that. So, there's, so, even if, even if, well... And then the, the other issue is the approval, the Planning Board approval of the subdivision back in the nineties, which stated that the land would, the open space would go, go to the town, and I just described that process. So either we do a modification to an approved subdivision and take that out of there, or we attempt to have the land accepted by the town. And if the town declines to take it, then there's two, there's probably two other options. It goes to a third party, or the current property owner, which is the developer, keeps the land.
So, Mr. Chairman, it would seem to me that, if possible, the best course of action would be to adjust the warrant article pertaining to this matter, to make some sort of provision for the turnover of the land to the, to the tr- Preservation Trust, as you indicated, the Town Planner's, uh, research had shown was a, was a possibility. Because I'm not sure if this is clear, as a warrant article, a town meeting, that, that by denying or the acceptance, that the fallback position is the trust, and that, that seems to me like something that could be very problematic as a presentation at town meeting.
Well, I think the fallback posi- position is the one that we have, the first fallback position is what, the one that we have now, which is the developer, who bought all the land, built the houses, carved out some open space, sold the lots that now have houses on them, and still owns the open space. That's essentially been the fallback position for the last fifteen years.
And we're, and you, I think you had mentioned earlier, that the proponent or the developer is not gonna clean it up, not gonna mitigate the, the concern raised by the Open Space Commission?
Be, not beyond what, what cleanup he's already accomplished.
Well, I'd be curious to hear from the Open Space Commission what your recommendation is, as far as how we proceed. To, uh, to try and turn it over to a trust, but as far as, do we, do we move forward with a warrant article that, um...
I mean, that's up to us, whether or not we wanna do it. I mean, they're, they're either gonna be forward or against it. Personally, I'd be against it, myself, I, I, I mean, I don't think it would be doing us any good as a board to recommend the town meeting that we...
That's why this, this whole thing, to me, is going to us pulling, pulling the warrant article.
But if we pull the warrant article, then the condition of the approval is never accomplished. It's never even attempted, which is to have the town take the land. That's why it's on the warrant as an, as our action to complete the condition of approval, which is for the town to take the land.
So we have to, so basically, because it's a condition of the subdivision, we have to move forward with a warrant article, according to Town Council, anyway.
Well...
We could be all against the...
Yes.
Recommending to town meeting, do not accept this, even though we're putting it forward, because we have to. We, we could say, recommend at town meeting, do not accept this, we're, we don't, because we believe there could be liability going forward.
And, and we, I, there should be some mention, I would think, of, of the Preservation Trust being a possibility.
There's another option, which would be to modify the approved subdivision. The proponent comes in, he asks for a modification to an approved subdivision, and the modification would be to change the condition from the open space shall go to the town of South Pro. Change that, delete that, and have it say, the open space shall go to somebody. And, and then the Planning Board would vote on that, and then that would be a modification to an approved subdivision. But I didn't... But I didn't, I don't remember a whole lot of discussion about that. I thought that, and I could be wrong, and again, we're getting into areas where, you know, probably need more guidance from town council, but that by putting it on the warrant, the town has attempted to comply with the condition of approval.
I just have a, a question or a concern. If it went to town meeting and town meeting didn't take it, in the past, we have a situation where we've been told, when the town didn't take a piece of open space that was supposed to be going to the town, that that open space is no longer open space and free and clear to be built upon. And while I don't hold by that theory, and we're hoping to find some legal clarification on that with the deed research project, I wouldn't want to open up that muddy water. So, I thought in our meeting with town council and Mark Purple, town planner, member of the planning board, and then two open space commissioners, that the option of offering it to the land trust, and it wasn't just to offer it to one, but to offer it also to see if the, any of the land trusts were interested that hold property in Southborough, particularly Sudbury Valley Trustees and the Southborough Open Land Foundation, to see if any of the three were interested, not, not just to do it to one, and then to get back and see which one or any of them wanted it. Then modify the subdivision plan, I mean, that's what we walked out of the room understanding, and it would seem, and then also you would need the conservation restriction. But my concern is, if you go to town meeting and town meeting doesn't take it, what protection does that land have as open space?
So, Mr. Chairman, if we modify the subdivision prior to town meeting, then we can pull the warrant article, correct?
I think so.
That, to me, is the right way to go.
I have to get back with the town planner on how many of these entities she spoke with, but I do remember her saying that on her first phone call, the, whoever she spoke with, one of these land foundations, first phone call that she made, said that they would take the land. Maybe others did too, I don't, I don't remember that part of it, but...
I spoke to Sudbury Valley Trustees and the Southborough Open Land Foundation today, and they hadn't been approached.
Mr. Mills?
Okay, so just summary, you're going to, you're going to talk to the town planner and see that the additional follow-ups to the, to those entities, if they're interested, and then go down the path of looking at, as Mr. Stein suggested, the possibly adjustment to an approved subdivision? Is that the way, is, is that how you recorded it, Destin?
I'll try to get ahold of the former town planner to find out what she did relative to this. And then I think the next step would be to share that information with town council and have him advise us as to the best course of action.
Agreed.
Which is, which could be, do nothing and let it remain in the current ownership, do something that allows it to go to a third party, go ahead with the warrant article, see what happens with that. Sounds like there's a lot of different options here that we could take, we just have to make sure that they're all legal and in the best interest of the town of Salpro. Any more questions or comments on the open space at Killam Farm Estates? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda, open space acceptance, Pine Hill Estates, conservation restriction. Is that why you're here, Bill?
Yeah, it's only been 10 years.
I'm glad you don't have a mic when you said that. Do you want to come forward and give the, the planning board an update on the status of this agenda item?
Bill Pizzoni, I was the developer, is the original developer's attorney on this, and then I was a trustee and a director of the Preservation Trust, which is, is putting the CR forward on this property. We developed the CR, God, it was a while ago. I fell out of the loop, I'm no longer a director of Preservation Trust, but I happened to find out today that this was on, so one of the other directors and owners asked me to come by. As far as I know, the CR, as it was written previously between town council and myself, has had some minor modifications to it. I don't find him objectionable, although I would have nothing to say about it at this point, but I think he's pleased with it. And it's my understanding that the town planner, the former town planner, decided to move this forward after talking with town council, because again, in that approval for that subdivision, it was recorded, some sort of a conservation restriction put on the property, or the property be deeded to a conservation entity. And that's why Preservation Trust now owns it. My understanding of why this has to go to town meeting, though, is because it's an interest in land, which any interest in land that the town is going to have, it has to go to town meeting for a town meeting vote. So it would be a validation of what's taken place over the last 10 years. I think the subdivision was approved in 1998 or something like that. Yeah.
After Stein.
You know what? I didn't see in, in our packet, the most recent version of the CR. Does anybody have that?
Should be in that blue folder there. Because when I found out about this, I came today to see what was in...
You have it?
I may have a copy here. My only copy, though, so, oh, Mimi has one, all right.
Sure, yep. Did you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mimi, can you come forward, please? There was, I recall and discussions that we had in joint meetings with the town planner at the time, that there were concerns about the exceptions to otherwise prohibited acts and uses.
I think, I think those have been, I think those have all been resolved in the latest. The, the only question we had was on the extinguishment clause.
Right.
Just on the reference to the unrestricted parcel.
That's in Roman numeral six. Do you want this back till you can, because of...
What's the date of the one that you're looking at?
This was on a letter from Aldo.
January 5th?
Yeah, January 5th, 2016.
Does it say revision, January 5th, up in the corner?
12/31/15.
That's the latest one, 12/31/15?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Okay. So where'd you get the January 5th?
It was on Aldo's cover letter.
Okay. So we all got, we all have that, and, and did you get your question answered? But did you get your answer?
No, because there was a problem with...
Right. Perhaps Attorney Pizzoni could answer this question.
I'd like to, but I didn't negotiate this last version of it. I haven't been involved in the negotiation of this for four years. Attorney Angelo Catanzaro worked with Aldo on it over the last four years. I had assumed they had incorporated, because I remember you had sent her a long memo, that they incorporated whatever they could agree on into it, and I just came to see where it was going to get resolved out tonight.
I think it's a legal question, though. It's just the language.
Which language? Let me get a look at it now. Not that I can negotiate it, but...
No, just...
Well, can you carry it, relay it back to Attorney Catanzaro?
Yeah. I'll, I'll give, relay it back to the trust.
What's the question?
Yeah, what is the question?
Under extinguishment A, it refers to the grantor and grantee agree that the donation of the conservation restriction gives rise for the purpose of this paragraph to a real property right immediately vested in the grantee with a fair market value that is at least equal to the proportionate value that this conservation restriction determined at the time of the gift bears to the value of the unrestricted premises at the time. And the, my question is that the premises is already open space, so it's already restricted, so I'm wondering what, why it would revert back to unrestricted premise?
Do you, do you understand if, if that word unrestricted was not there, would that be okay? Would that take, take away your concern?
Yes. But I'm not an attorney, so I don't know why, if it's there for a reason.
But the fact that it's there, do you understand what, what it means or what it... Because I don't.
Well, yeah, if the, if, if the CR is extinguished, there's some value to the, to the property.
But the word unrestricted premises, unrestricted, is that your...
It's not a defined term. It's, premises is defined, which is the property that they're talking about. Unrestricted is just another adjective to it, so...
So is that, we want you to go forward with...
Beats me, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what it, what it's in there for, I'll ask them. But this basically...
It's just that, that word, yes.
I mean, this paragraph A is, basically what it's saying is that we're giving you the CR, but we're going to be able to take a tax deduction for whatever the fair market value is of whatever we're giving away, which is the value of, of the land and putting the CR on it. It's not going to amount to anything, it's probably going to cost them more to have an appraisal done than it's worth, but that's probably customary language, it is customary language, although I haven't seen the unrestricted word in there before.
Is, is a customary, pardon my ignorance, was it customary to have an extinguishment clause in, in a conservation restriction?
Yeah. It is.
So if we get clarity on that, Mimi, do we think we could...
The Open Space Preservation Commission is fine with it, other than the question on that one word.
So, similar to the previous agenda items...
I will ask Aldo.
You have a homework assignment.
Sure.
And ask that whoever you, whoever is responsible to, to change this or explain it, get ahold of Hillary?
I'll do...
Either through an email or a telephone call?
I'll do one better, I'll have town council reach out to her, because he's who I'm going to talk to about this first.
How, we, we trust...
I'll run it by the...
We trust your judgment to get, to get us the answer.
Yeah, I know, because you want to get it on town meeting.
Yeah, and we want to get it cleared up, hopefully before next Monday, when we have our joint meeting with the selectmen.
All right. Two phone calls tomorrow, it's not a problem.
Excellent. Three for three. Three cooperative...
Always cooperative, Donald.
Although I'm looking at the next agenda item, and no. Very good. Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Bill. We, we know that you didn't have to. All set with that one, gentlemen?
Good. We're rolling.
All of these folders are here, prepared in advance by the former town planner, and put together for our convenience tonight by, by Hillary. Once again, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, sign review, 352 Turnpike Road. I see we have two people here tonight for this. Mr. Martins. Jose, haven't seen you in a while, how are you?
I'm good, how are you, Don?
Good, thank you. Good to see you.
In the line of fire here.
What's that, in the line of fire? Yeah, I know. Yeah.
I'm, I'm here with Heather Vikoski, she and I represent the bill, the owners of the building at 352 Turnpike Road.
We have...
Can you get closer to the mic?
I'm sorry.
We have in our packets the submittal, and did you want to take us through this?
Sure. What we're looking to do is install a, a sign on the front of the building, high enough so that it can be seen from Route 9, simply the numbers of the building, 352. The building is over 600 feet from Route 9, and we're concerned, we're hearing from our tenants that too often visitors to the building can't identify the building, and they drive past it and get lost. So for the convenience of our tenants, we'd like to see a sign up there. In addition, we're concerned that, from the standpoint of public safety, if, if the situation ever arises where we need fire or police, it's important to us that the building be identifiable. The owners purchased this building without signage, and they'd like to rectify the situation. The sign we're looking for is compliant as far as the size. The zoning allows for 75 square feet of signage, we're looking for, put up less than 60 square feet. The issue is the height. We're allowed up to 20 feet above finished grade, we're looking to install the sign from 22 to 27 feet above finished grade. That way it'll be seen from Route 9. The sign will be tastefully backlighted with LED lighting, so it'll be visible at night. And we're not, you know, we're not looking to identify a tenant or help promote the building, it's simply for the convenience and safety of the tenants.
Why, why does it have to be illuminated?
So it can be seen at night. Most, a lot of the tenants are there, working late.
It's primarily law offices in that building, so there are some meetings at night where they have clients come in.
I mean, personally, I, I've been to a lot of places at night, I haven't found a need for the address to be large and illuminated in this fashion.
I think the sign...
Me going out on, you know, places, appointments and such at night, to add this, a huge point of light like this seems unnecessary.
The, the, the size of the sign is a function of the distance from the road, it's almost 650 feet from Route 9, and, and we've, we've had design people try to visualize how large it'll look from Route 9, and it, you know, because it's so far away, they feel that five-foot-high numbers are, are critical.
What if we had the sign turned off at a certain point in time, like after 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night? like after 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night?
Mr. Chairman, if I recall correctly at this point, we, our involvement with this process is to answer four questions and give a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Inserting this. And my understanding is that's why you got the book. So we could refer to the code on what we'd be answering and sending to the zoning board of appeals.
That's correct. Once in a while, we look in the book.
So Jesse, I don't know if you've been through one of these.
Yeah, we're not voting to.
I understand that we're not voting to approve it. I just wanted to ask the question. Preparation for the four questions before us. So before we get to that, we have a Town of Salpro Planning Board application for a sign form that was submitted on January 25th. It explains the material, which is metal, graphics, the size, the location. And then, and the owner. The reason that that application, let's see. That application, like I said, January 25th. So on February 8th, the building commissioner wrote a letter back to Ferris Development. "Greetings, I have reviewed your proposal to install a wall sign per your submitted plan. Property is located in an IP industrial park zone. Plan shows the sign would exceed the allowable height. At this time, I must deny your request for a building permit. To proceed with this project, specific zoning relief in the form of a special permit must first be granted by the zoning board. If you choose to seek zoning relief, you must apply for a hearing with the zoning board of appeals for relief from the following sections of Salpro zoning bylaw. It's 174-11 Sign Regulation Table D. I have enclosed a special permit application and filing instructions for your convenience. Also contact the town planner for planning board approval." I think he meant recommendation. "Please feel free to contact me with any questions." And so that's what you've done. So 174-11. E. So 174-11 is, in the zoning code, is entitled signs. And if you go to 11E, it says special permits for signs. And it's got all the dimensions and all that. But it says, "The board of appeals will not act on any special permit or variance application without first receiving a written report from the planning board. A favorable report of the planning board shall indicate that." And then there's five items. "The sign scale is determined to be in reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance, and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures." So it's agree, disagree, well, agree, disagree, or not applicable. Right? So do we agree that the sign scale is determined to be in reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance, and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures? I agree.
Well, I think, my one question would be, are there any other signs? That last piece that says about applicable...
Sign sizes on nearby structures.
Are there any other signs that big? On any, are there any other buildings near there? And I think the answer is no. And I'm just...
There are a number of signs, a number of buildings on Route 9 that have signs that are much larger than this. I have photos, if you'd like to see them.
And I don't think they're nearly as far away from Route 9 as our building is.
Okay.
I think if you, if, well...
I mean, I know it's a technical...
If we look at the...
Technicality in the location, it's just I... I'm not, I'd agree with you.
So you're going to, you have an agree, Mr. Mills? Mr. Stein? To me, it's a not applicable. I mean, and there's nothing to either side of it to compare it to, really. I was going to say something about that. There don't appear to be any nearby structures. It's quite a distance from... So it's either, to me, it's either no or not applicable. And I would go with not applicable, because because of the unique positioning of the property, really. Let's move on to the next one. Yep. Number two, "Sign size, shape, and placement serves to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices, and roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them." To me, that's an agree.
I agree.
That's three agrees. The next one, number three, "Sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures, and provides reasonable continuity in mounting location and height proportions and materials." Looking at the picture, I think I have an agree on that one.
I agree.
I'll go with agree. That's three for number three. Number four, "Sign materials, colors, lettering, style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible with building design, neighborhood, context, and use." I got an agree on that one. Well, except for the illumination, I'd say agree.
Well, I mean, so you look at when, you know, January. It gets dark at 4:00, right? It's still, it's got to be lit. People could still be looking for it. I mean, it's got to get lit. And the code already describes, correct, Mr. Chairman, that if the building, if the, if the business is not open after X, I think it's 10:00, lights have to be off anyhow. Although it's when you go by...
Right.
Long's Cadillac. That's why there are no lights on, because they're not open. So the lights are going to be off.
And the reason Mark declined it was for the height, correct? Okay, I agree. Three agrees on number four. Number five, "Sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. An unfavorable report of the planning board shall indicate which of the above criteria were not met, and shall state what modifications to the sign or signs could be made to render a favorable report." Well, that's... We have to vote on the last one. Well, yeah, it's part of that number five, but because it's the last one. But I'll go back to the, "Sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic." Agree.
I agree.
I agree. So...
Start on the first one.
Go back to the first one. "Sign scale is determined to be in reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance, travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures." I think that the viewer distance is, because it's so far back from Route 9, I think you make a very good point that it has to be that big. And...
I agree, you could go not applicable.
And the travel speed.
The whole reason why they need a variance is on the size, and that it has to be so far back. So that's why I would agree that it's...
And again, I think we're only recommending because of the height. So I'm not... Agree? An agree on this one? Sure.
Agree.
So we got all agrees, all five agrees. So what the planning board will do is we'll send our letter to the ZBA reflecting our vote on these five elements of the report that, based on our vote, our discussion tonight, the report will be a favorable report.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four for four.
And we had no homework. Yes.
And no homework, right. We got homework on that one. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. Warren article, zoning map update to create solar overlay district. For the planning board groupies, you will remember that we had at our last meeting the opening of this public hearing. There was a discussion, there were two different maps that we were trying to figure out which one was appropriate. So we continued the hearing. We have received clarification from the former town planner and the materials, and are ready to continue the hearing tonight with clear guidance and better materials. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Stein to continue the hearing. Mr. Stein? So the key point that was carried over from the public hearing on our proposed overlay district was the actual area of the district and the maps that had been made available to the public. The map that is on the cardboard display here and on the screen is the correct map. The genesis of this was, and this is in my correspondence with Hillary, the original map was something that the town planner at the time had drafted on her own, and that was the map that was handed out, a hard copy at the last meeting, which did not jibe with the map on our presentation. What had happened in the genesis was the town planner had sent a letter out to the owners of the industrial park areas in a butters, and the new parcels, as illustrated in this map, were based on interest generated by that letter. The map was changed the first couple of weeks of the year, or the end of last year, and the map was necessitated by the wording in the bylaw creating the by right area. So this is the correct map. This is the area in which owners of parcels, as outlined in the proposed bylaw, will be able to construct 250-kilowatt output commercial ground-based solar arrays by right. And by right as defined, or as of right as defined in the proposed bylaw, is without a special permit. It is still going to be subject to site plan approval and approval by the building enforcement officer. So I hope that clarifies both the actual area of the overlay district, as well as explains the discrepancy in the maps that were issued. And I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time as it pertains to the bylaw. One thing that caught my eye, Mr. Chairman, was that the language in the handout of tonight's bylaw still does actually reflect, contrary to town council's recommendation, site plan review granting authority in Section B, Paragraph 1. And that does need to be stricken from the language of the bylaw, as the whole point is, no, excuse me, the special permit. Right. Where did you get that? That was in, so this, at my seat here. Hillary had put copies of the map and copies of the bylaw. So I'm just assuming that in the interim from our last meeting, Hillary hasn't had a chance to actually correct the bylaw language. But it does need to be corrected, for sure. And my recommendation is that this be made, you know, with some degree of urgency, that we do have the actual correct bylaw for Monday night for our meeting with the board of selectmen. Agree. I'll check on that with Hillary tomorrow. And are you, are we clear about what I'm referring to here? Yes. The special permit, okay. It refers to a special permit, which is, the whole purpose of this overlay district is so you don't need a special permit. That's the whole point. So also the draft that I have here of the Warren articles that we've been talking about tonight, you know, the road acceptances, the open space, and now the solar. It's showing up on this draft. I'm not sure if the numbers are still the same, but it shows up as Article 35 is the ground-mounted solar energy system, large-scale, as of right. And then there's an article with no number that refers to the zoning map. I believe town council... Did he inform you, or was it just through Hillary, that I heard that town council says that this does not need its own separate article at town meeting? That if Article 35, which is revising the language, if the town votes to approve that, that the map goes along with it? Did you hear anything about that? The only input the town council had at our previous public hearing on this was in regards to the language pertaining to special permit. I do not recall town council referring to a separate warrant article for the map. That's more mechanics of how it gets presented to the town meeting, because the materials won't change, whether it's one article or two separate articles. So we'll try to get that cleared up before next Monday also, as to... And I think Mr. Purple has a good grasp on the town warrant and the article numbers. So we'll take that as an item that we have to get cleared up also. Was that it, Mr. Stein? Unless there's any further questions, I think we've addressed the outstanding concerns with this proposed warrant.
Unless there's any further questions, um, I think we've addressed the outstanding concerns with this, uh, proposed Warren article.
And, uh, any comments, Mr. Mills?
Great job, Mr. Stein.
Why, thank you. Appreciate it.
Terry, can you do a, another, uh, room shot? Just to show the public that, um, there's standing room only for this one. So are there any questions or, or, uh, comments from the public on, on, uh, the overlay map? Seeing none, entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for Warren article zoning map and update to create a so, solar overlay district.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. So the only changes to the materials that we have here will have been discussed with a, um, clear, uh, understanding of what would happen, which, which is the deletion of the mention of a, a special permit, that section. And then also whether or not it's a standalone article or, um, or merged with the, uh, text article. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Three to zero, uh, public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Stein. Next item on the agenda is the planner's report. For those who were in the room that weren't here earlier, we had a seven o'clock, uh, public hearing that was continued with no action tonight, was continued to March seventh. So, uh, we had to wait, uh, from se, a little after seven until eight o'clock for, uh, the next agenda item. But we did conduct some items in between that are administrative. One was a, a brief discussion about the status of the me, meeting minutes. Some information, uh, relative to the planner's report. We don't have a town planner, but Hillary has given us materials, which I went over briefly. And then, um, we did discuss the, uh, the, uh, the ENF, environmental notification form for the Park Central project. The, that ENF was received by, uh, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Department, and I, I believe others in the town government. And there was a comment period which ended last Friday. And, to my knowledge, the, uh, Conservation Commission, uh, submitted comments. And the reason I know that is because I was in the, in the room when, um, those were being prepared and signed by the conservation, uh, people. And, uh, the planning board submitted, uh, uh, comments as well. And then with discuss, uh, discussions on throughout the day on Friday, we, uh, had knowledge of and today received a copy of the comments from MAPC. Is there any questions? I, I know we, we went over this earlier and you can watch the replay. Uh, we discussed it in a little bit more detail, but because it shows up on the agenda as other business properly before the board, which we usually take toward the end, and I think we're getting close to the end tonight, that I brought it up again in case anybody, those of you who are in the room, uh, missed it. So any questions or comments?
Good evening.
Hi. Wendy DeMichaelis, fifteen Bantry Road. I just had a question. I did see a copy of those comments from, what is it, the MP?
MAPC.
MAPC. And I noticed that they were copied to your board and I, one other person, I can't, I'm not sure who. I was just wondering if they were distributed to all the boards in town. Oh, is that a hard copy? Oh, somebody in Mass DOT and you.
I'll have to check with, uh, Hillary. We just received, we received this electron, I think they, uh, sent it to us either after five o'clock, well, certainly after, uh, noon on Friday when, uh, the planning department, planning board submitted our comments. And I, as I stated earlier in tonight's meeting, was on the phone with MAPC as late as about ten or five minutes of five on Friday, at which time they told me that they had sent this electronically to, uh, the MIPA office and that they would be sending it to us. So if they, uh, sent it electronically to us, uh, Friday at five o'clock, I wasn't here in the town hall to receive it, and neither was Hillary. So we either received it then or, uh, today. And then Hillary made copies and, uh, gave it to us today. So today's the first time that we've seen it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I was just wondering if there was a process. My favorite word.
And, and if, I'll check with Hillary now, looking at the CC on this, that, uh, we make sure that the ZBA gets a copy.
Right.
And, uh, that the, the selectmen and town council. Those, those are the, the, uh, yeah, those are the people that we sent copies of our comments to.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to see it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that one? Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion here and all in favor? Planning board is adjourned. Thank you.